I'd like to call meeting 1,632 to order at 6:35.
Madam Chair, I'd move to move executive state session to half hour later in the agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, so let's take a vote. On that, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yeah.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. All right. So we will go on to the standing reports and the approval of the minutes for meeting 1,631.
I move to approve committee meeting minutes from meeting 1631 from July 21st, 2022.
Second.
I have an edit. There was a statement that we were going to get refreshments.
Soon to be alive.
I moved that we strike that.
Yes. You know, as I was well thinking of making food it taste, I was thinking, well, now I have to be there early to meet with Beth and I. So I dropped the ball, so I had to promise.
No, just don't.
No more promises, okay. Okay.
Just be a surprise.
So just I moved that we just removed to clean up the minutes.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other changes?
I don't think we need a second. I think we just need to accept that.
Okay, so now we're going to take a vote. Art?
So instead of instead of the second that there was no second needed for Bonnie, we're just, I agree to accept the amendment and so does Bonnie do you?
Yes.
Okay. Just part of the order.
Okay. So now, Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Jane? Yes. Okay, so. We're going on to.
Can I ask a question about the minutes?
Yeah.
Did the letter get sent out?
No. The letter was going to be, you all were going to be sending me questions.
And you got no questions?
I got zero.
Okay.
And I thought I better use some of my time in the chairman's report to see, I didn't feel comfortable pursuing. Going forward with it a little more.
Okay.
Yeah. By the way, is anybody giving name to your seat on the regional plan?
And there's no miscellaneous correspondence and the students are not here.
Not yet.
Looking forward to seeing them. There's no public comment. The business managers got in touch with me a few days ago to say that the change in, that they weren't going to be able to produce the warrant tonight and they would apologize and we'll be presenting it in our next.
Will that pose a problem with?
They actually didn't have.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so I guess the appropriate time is business with district member towns where. I need some more direction here by, I know in the summer sometimes things, we're so busy doing what we can't do in the winter. So I don't know whether people did it right to me because they don't have any questions or just they were overwhelmed and want to authorize me to. Write something without your input.
Or may I suggest?
Yeah.
That we. Put an item on the agenda and during an open full school meeting, we give you the points. That don't have a sense.
Yeah.
We're together and our brains have to think about it.
Yeah, okay, well, the. How about we? Have a motion to postpone this business with district member towns item till the, after we've done our executive sessions today in case, since it's a standing item, I think I could take your input from you tonight if we have. Have the wherewithal.
I move that we move business with district member towns item on the agenda to the end of our open session agenda.
Second.
Okay. Um. So. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danil?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane. Okay, so we're going to.
Jane, what?
Jane, yes. Yes, I say yes, we're gonna hopefully have enough. Energy at the end to, for you to give me input. All right. So I guess my chairman's report was about how I haven't, hadn't heard from you, so that's part of it. It's also that I just want to compliment. Our legal team. And for the responsiveness to the, remember you asked me to go ahead and post questions and. Both Carol and Josh have been amazingly quickly answering questions and both agreed to come tonight to further your understanding of these things and I just want to. Say on record that we are very lucky that we get this kind of treatment because. Especially in the summer when people are on vacation and they're willing to talk to one on their vacation, that's pretty remarkable.
Did you ask for a public comment?
Yes.
I did, there's nobody.
Sofa.
Well, unless the note taker wants to ask, we don't have anyone else here to do that. So I go on to Beth.
All righty. Okay. So I have lots of fun things to share except for the first one, so if someone does want to come. So I do want to. Share that I have regretfully accepted two administrative resignations. Jeremy Wells has given his notice and Doug DePande has given his notice. Both of them are. Pursuing jobs that are. Their dream job where they want to go, so we wish them the best of luck and we're always happy when people have. You know, built up their skills and I think we've always done good work when someone else wants them. On that, you see how nice I'm being? Really, I'm holding it, I'm totally holding it in. No, I'm happy for them and we wish them the best with positions are already posted with Jeremy, it's a little bit trickier as you know because we had. We were lucky enough to have someone who handled both food service and our buildings and grounds, so that's two positions right there that I have to fill as well as. An assistant principal position, so as I said, all of the positions are posted and we have applicants already, we plan to begin interviewing as soon as the end of next week and. We have other open positions still in the district and we have hired approximately 10 new people already, so I'll give the committee a full list when we get to. The end of the month when we know everybody, we have a new hire day orientation on. I was going to say April, that's how you know how it's going. On August 25th and so. We'll update everybody after. We have those, those new people aboard.
I just got the surprise about Jeremy the other day, somebody, somebody had seen your ad that you had in the paper about, you know.
Well, I haven't been here yet, so they beat me to it, but we, I don't think we could wait, you know, we had to post it, so. Because, you know, this is, it's a tricky time of year, so.
I was just kind of surprised that, you know, the wind had carried it around.
Oh, the wind had it, had it carried.
You know, they said, I saw this in the paper, you know, and I said, what?
That's right. That's right. Yeah, we had no time to waste, so we want, we want our buildings, no one's going anywhere until we're set, so we have time to work that out. And he said to tell the one back, Doug went back to being a principal, which is what he.
Let's clarify, they're, they're keeping their, they're staying here until we find replacements or?
Jeremy is staying here, we, it's up to the supervisor and we've worked with. Mr. DePande's new superintendent and picks a date that he will be done here and can start his new duties in his new district. Jeremy is willing to stay on, this is a, you know, you have a longer. Period of time that we're going to work through it. So it's great, it's fine. So early college, so I'm going to have Julie pull up, can you do that? So we're sharing tonight the logo that has been designed and it is being formally. Presented at Bard College at Simon's Rock this evening at their meeting and this is. A combined effort between the PR communications people and both the Simon's Rock team and our team. Of putting together our logos and coming up with the early college program logo. So. We've been waiting anxiously for this because we have. An FAQ, a brochure, social media posts, we need to wear some swag, you know, we've got a lot going on. They want to put it, it went with the packages of the new books for the students in the fall, so. You can see they, they moved, they took, this is for a bunch of different reasons, they have it, you can go down, like they have it for the stationery.
These are the two ones.
Right, oh, that's all, he didn't do the other page.
Oh.
So you can have just the logo mark without it, this is the gray, you know, what, so you can have a lot of versions of it, but anyway. So this is. What's being presented in both. Our district and. And Simon's Rock tonight and hopefully tomorrow morning we'll be ready to go.
Question? Um, my only concern is why it doesn't say early college high school.
Because it was already long.
But does this become confusing?
No.
We have a name of the high school before early college.
If you look at, so we also looked at what a lot of other programs have and it was very similar, they didn't, they didn't necessarily write high school out, they would just say. I'm making a naragansit early college with, you know, so, but we were also trying to make it. Legible, it had to have, you know, you have to incorporate everybody's font color, there's a lot happening, you know.
I know.
Yeah. So this is how, what came to agreement with a lot of people.
Okay.
Thinking it through, you know what I'm saying?
All right.
Just like the comment that at our table in the visioning.
Yes.
We made a tree as a symbol.
Yes, you did.
Of what, what this is about, I don't think we're responsible for this, but I think it resonates very nicely with the group I was working with.
Actually, the, the fading of the tree in the. Background, the way it is, you know, like almost like watermarks behind was the suggestion of Ken Knobs. So.
Wow.
Everybody had a little say in the development.
A map person.
So it was.
And I love that it has the mountains in it.
Right.
Right.
So we just wanted to share it with everybody, like I said, it's had a lot of marketing eyes look at it.
Now, what will you do in terms of? Does that mean everything that will be distributed here? It will now, we will be using this logo, I'll probably have it added to our stationery, probably our bottom.
You know, our signature lines, I think we should do that.
Yeah.
You know, I think it should be part of the secondary's, you know, same thing, so yes.
And you could also still have, you know, the.
Vision, our SBRSD and the other. Correct.
So that.
Which is why we had all those other versions, so you could fit it and you could, your stationery didn't become, you know, five hundred logos. Yeah.
Yeah, they came up with all, all the different things we would maybe need it for.
It's also very clean.
Which I think was appealing, I was, I'll be honest, at first I was very concerned that. Maybe the with Bard College at Simon's Rock wasn't as visible, but actually as we played with it and tried to make it, it stands out more like this than it stood out when we tried to do some other different things, so it was, it was kind of an interesting experience to work with them, but. I thought you guys would like to see it this evening, so.
I wish there was one more proposition. It's amazing.
It's so true.
Nice.
So that's the logo. I already talked about how we're going to start using it, today we had the opportunity to meet with our. Jobs for the Future coaching staff, so we have a new coach that was assigned to us and planned for the upcoming year. The, they have spread it out over the year and it's about two hours per month virtually with two in-person visits, site visits. For the year, now that doesn't mean we can't call them up and ask for more help or other support, but that's what they're actually scheduled for.
Can you explain jobs of the future, coach, the position?
That is assigned by the state for early college programs, so Jobs for the Future is the consultant or company that they're working with to provide coaching supports to those of us starting early.
Early colleges, okay, thank you.
So that, and we are.
Sure, they have a very, very long history in the school to career movement because many places that I started academy programs in different cities, we would partner with jobs.
Yeah, I didn't know about how long they're.
Oh yeah, they started in Boston.
So we are accepting applications for the early college internship coordinator position as we mentioned and our next early college visioning evening is eight as on August 24th at 6:00 PM. So now that we have our new zippy logo, we'll be starting the marketing of that and we have that pretty well planned, so. As we mentioned, it'll be here in August and I think in October, we're going to switch and go to Simon's Rock, so we'll be going back and forth over the next four.
I wanted to ask about, there was a set group of people who were there, is that fluid, people can be added?
That's correct, because some people couldn't make that one, so, and some people are, we're going to try to give as much information about what we're doing in this session, some people might not want to be here for this one, but might want to come to the third, you know, in schedule, so we're going to. Share that out next week or the end of this week, whenever we can get it all together. So, but there's four, we gave the dates, we also remember have the early college webpage on our website, so you can always go there, those four dates are posted there, the agendas, the slides, all the work that we've already been working on. We had the meeting with the commissioner, he was, it was lovely, he released a seven-page single space superintendent checklist. So I wanted to get that right going, so.
Thank you for that share.
Yeah, I almost, I almost thought you should see it. We talked about guidance for reopening and it's the same as where it stood in the spring, there is no masking requirement except in health offices, there's no statewide testing requirements, there's no COVID case reporting requirements at this point to start the year. CDC will be releasing their guidance coming out sometime this week, the commissioner wanted it, noted that schools don't necessarily follow whatever the CDC guidance is, so take that as you may. I will be doing a welcome back memo obviously to families and I will put in the specific guidance, the links will be very clear as to. What the opening looks like and that probably won't be until next week.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
So can we create our own expectations or are we bound to do this minimal approach that they're thinking at the state?
I think you can be more restrictive if you want, but that's going to, that's going to create a whole different.
Well, I know, I know, I know, I just want to know.
And again, this is what we're saying at this moment, right, as we all know, everything could change, he said, you know, even in the spring, we said we were going to do this and we ended up doing something else, so at this moment, this is the current guidance. And everything is usual, subject to change, but I want to at least inform parents of where we are right now.
I guess it's similar to Jim's question, but. If you're looking at the dashboard, you know, the weekly dashboard. The numbers are creeping up, like do you have? Like a threshold?
A threshold in that, yes. And they don't recommend that you actually base it on a threshold because that can be kind of limiting, but again, we're never going to say never, but we don't have, you know, now that the, I think one of the things that they're saying with the accessibility to testing.
Yeah.
Is there now and it's not as challenging to get that, so people can make those decisions and they have access to that, so. They're not thinking they need to step in at this time, but that's, and the other piece around that is, it's perfectly acceptable if someone, and we will be stating that as well, if you feel more comfortable wearing a mask.
Yeah.
You absolutely are welcome to do that, you know, we're, we're not going to have any specific requirements, we're still going to be going outside when we can. That is, yes, but that is, right, that's a specific requirement, but other than that, you know, but you, people should feel free to do what they feel is best for them and we'll make sure that that's a normal practice.
Is there an intention to have a conversation just with our community advisors from the health departments, just to bring them up to speed on what the DSS is saying to us, so everybody's on the same page going into this career?
So they also meet with them, the health boards themselves, but yes, I was actually thinking we need to just do that. For a variety of reasons, not just that, you know, our mental health discussion, so you know, I think, I think we should do an opening of the year discussion. So it was on my, on my. Radar to have a health group meeting.
That's a great group.
Yeah.
Cool testing goes away.
Everything, yes, there's, that's, that's the other piece, right, there's no statewide contract for testing, so that's another reason that they're not. Again, at the, and we're responsible, they were very clear that we should have supplies and testing again is something you can get, but we have extra masks, we have, we have other supplies still on hand.
How people look larger, so they have additional information, are we taking additional initiatives in the area of mental health?
We have a lot of initiatives going on and. Well, I think I would want to wait until Sandy comes back because there was some data that they were analyzing, we did have, I think Julie reported last time about the program that we ran over the summer with Dr. Hall. And our staff, there's some great trainings, there's, there are a lot of things going on, but I feel like Sandy would be a better person to report on.
Last question, taking a step back towards just COVID and whatnot, how are supply chain logistics, I know that for masks, for gloves, for. What other supplies that we might need, but is that easily accessible, do we have a stockpile?
We have a stockpile.
Okay.
We have a stockpile, but we also, there are lots of people who have them, I get messages every day saying, do you need gloves, do you need masks? So I think it's not as challenging as it was.
How does it relate at all to buses?
And there's no protocol and no masking on buses. So that was my next thing, were you cheating off my shoulder?
No.
I was going to say the bus routes are done and they will be posted within the next week, we made those adjustments. Our third administrative retreat is wrapping up our summer work as administrators is on Wednesday, August 17th. And finally, I was interviewed today by the Berkshire Eagle about the. Our obtained, and I should say Sandy, Julie and myself obtained a diversity equity inclusion certification from Cornell over this last year and. They were very interested in that work and why we were doing it and how it related to our overall goals as a committee and as a community, so. Look for that, look for that article, so that was great. I think that's everything. Oh, nope. And Dennis pointed out, and we already put it out on the website, that I believe. I'm trying to, I just want to make sure, it said that we are, there's an opportunity for, sponsored by Berkshire Money Management, for people to pick up backpacks to start the year off right and. There's a drive-through pickup in one of three locations in Dalton, Pittsfield and Great Barrington and you, there's backpack items for students, so we put that out on our website and shared that. But thank you Dennis for bringing that forward.
What day is that?
August 17th from 3:30 to 6:00 PM.
Can you forward this?
It's right on it, we just literally posted it on our.
So I can.
Yes, you can, you can copy it, put it right in your Facebook.
I think it's three different dates, one for each of the.
It says one date, but it's three different locations, it says one date in time, but three, three different locations, you can do that.
It's easier to remember.
Yes. And, but thank you for saying that. Now I promise that.
Can I ask one last question?
You can.
Yes.
Just with Jeremy's departure. Knowing that he's going to stay on, will there be overlap with the, the new people who are coming on, so there's knowledge transfer continuity and all that training?
That's ideal, we'd like that ideally, you know, I don't know.
If it does take longer than expected, is there, are we set up for the business continuity discussion with whoever comes in for the two roles? Or could we have Jeremy just be over documenting recently, just make sure that.
Yeah. His plan is to make sure that, that he supports and cross strains as much as possible and, you know, knowing him the way I know him, I know he's also someone that we can pick up the phone in. I also have contacts just from. My business years that there are some organizations like the MFAA and a few people who have started up their own consulting services that almost like TMS, if you can't find some, they can, they can sometimes supply you with an interim.
Yeah.
If we really get there, but I have received some applications that look free. But so I'm hopeful. For buildings, for both, actual, for both, and actually he was, he was helping me go through them today to make sure people had right certifications and things like that, so we're going to, you know, I'm fingers crossed.
But how long, did you say he would agree to stay around?
Well, they have, they have a requirement and that's like 120 days in there, so, and I may hold them to it, I told them. I'm not usually like that, but in this case, yeah, so. Yeah. So he's still smiling at me, he didn't come in for a few days, but he's here now. Yeah, so I think we'll be okay.
All right. No further questions, all right, so now we are going to hear from the director of curriculum instruction and professional development.
Okay, so I'm going to start with kind of taking back in off of the backpack thing, we do have. Staples has given us a huge amount of boxes of back-to-school supplies that we're going to be able to give to every student in the district.
Every student?
I'm pretty sure I have enough for every student now, I have lots and lots and lots.
What types of things?
So it's a little box that has like markers, pencils, pens, dry erase markers, you know, a variety, rulers, your typical kind of.
Glue stick.
Welcome back.
I'm sure there's a glue stick in there, I have no doubt. But they did a, a thing through Staples, they've been doing it for over six months now where people come in and they say, would you like to. Buy for your district school supplies or whatever, and then they send us all of these cases, so it's been trickling in for months, but the most recent delivered was quite large, so I think we have enough for everybody. So Monday, the state released the preliminary raw MCAS scores, so the scale scores and achievement levels we do not have yet, so this is real preliminary. And since it's only Wednesday, I don't have a lot to say, but then I've seen it. I have seen it, I have not analyzed it.
What do you mean?
You know, I'm a slacker. We are, I'm thrilled that all our new supplies have been coming in, last year was kind of tough, we, there was a supply chain issue like it was for everybody last year and we didn't think we were going to get all our materials in time, but this year we've had it from, so. So we have, um, I told you before, we were purchasing a new reading curriculum for the middle school. Um, to, we're using grant money from the early college grant to accelerate and support differentiation at those grade levels. And so that curriculum, uh, is en route. I just got the email. It should probably be here next week. And actually have training set up for those three teachers, well, at this point too, because we're still working to hire one. Starting next week. So that's, everything's moving quite quickly, but they are eager to get their hands on it and get the training.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, how did our students do who did that two week intensive? Um, just the eighth grade over at Simon's Rock? What did that do?
We didn't hear, um, uh, an update, even though I did see John for a little while today, but we can get one. He, he had popped in on a couple of sessions and said that they were, um, saying to be enjoying themselves.
It sounded good, but we haven't gotten any feedback since they finished. So we'll have to get back to you.
And are you getting evaluations from students, feedback from students?
We will.
Yeah, we'll get it shortly.
And are any of our students taking the summer courses that were offered? Timber framing and.
And it's going through.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I don't know that we did have that. And I think they were, even, um. Provost Weinstein said that they were struggling. I think a lot of people wanted their summertime off because they didn't have it last year and it was hard to get them. But I think they're encouraged and want to continue those same type of things going forward. But I don't think there was a huge enrollment anywhere on those, even though they were great offerings.
Never was.
They were really great offerings. But we also talked about if they could be notified earlier. We have a better chance of, you know, before people are making their classes.
All right, Jeff.
Madam Chair, I think a motion that we send a thank you letter to Staples. Uh, thanking them for being a good community partner to the district.
I'll second that. That's a great.
Written by the.
By whom?
The, the chair. Sent by the chair.
Uh, that would be to the Great Barrington.
Just the Great Barrington Staples. And, uh, it, it goes from like the management all the way down to the people who are working the things. I mean, they enthusiastically.
I would love.
Promote the district and it's really nice to see that. And it's really heartwarming.
I think if, I will try to, with your permission, I would.
I'll write a draft.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying that if on the first day of school, we get some photographs and I can send the letter with the photographs. That might be fun.
I think that's a great idea.
So I'll, I'll talk to Carrie about.
I amend my motion for time.
We can definitely.
And I second this, and this amendment.
Okay. All right. So we'll go take a vote. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danell? Okay. I was going to see it. Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane. All right. So the letter shall be written. And I, I guess because Sandy is still, you're, you're.
I am.
Yes, there's no report tonight for her.
Right. Okay. So, and the early college has been dealt with?
Mm-hmm. No, I still have questions to her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know that I am.
I think Art also has a question.
Okay. So there, I'm going to let Art speak first because.
No, I was going to comment. I, Becky ran into one of the students that took the, uh, college, and, and she was still deaf.
Oh, really?
Wow.
Uh, immersion for two weeks?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Oh.
He said it was great, so.
Awesome. That's terrific.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
So, um, my question is related to. What will actually be happening in terms of school this year? So I know the seniors are going to be taught by Simon's Rock teachers.
Yeah. There, there's, there will be. One course. There's, there is a, there is a, uh, specific course that is, um. Would qualify for senior English. Um, so, uh, that will be taught by, um, an early college certified faculty member. Because we don't have anybody fully there yet, with the exception of, um, Mr. Wolbans. Who, um, is, has presented, is one of the, of our teachers that's in the early college certification process. And, uh, his coursework, um, one of the courses that he, um, pushed, put forward as being an early college class. Upon review, they already felt it was ready. And so they, he is, um, taking the early college certification. Course that they're offering at the end of August. So he will be ready to go. So that course will also make those students, and I think there's 16 of them eligible for early college as well. So there's quite a large number.
Graphic novel course?
I think it's the. This one.
Okay. So that's the only, everybody else is taught by whom?
Our staff.
Okay.
And that's not true. Um, we, that's not true. We've always had multiple offerings. We've had two courses, um, a semester for two or three years now and, and summer courses that. Um, so there is an offering, I believe it's graphic design and film are the two courses that are being offered in the, um, early college. Block at the end of the day that we're talking about, that, that you can either take early college coursework. You could take regular, um, coursework, or you can, uh, be participating in an internship and, and be at the end of the day.
Okay. And my next question is, how are we providing orientation for families about this?
There's a whole new way, process that, um, was part of the, um, implementation plan. So, um, there is, uh, support from Simon's Rock. Guidance, working with our guidance counselors that will be orientating all of our students. Um, and they have counseling sessions, uh, I shouldn't call counseling sessions.
Advised.
Advised, thank you. That's, we're going to advisory sessions. And there's, um, multiple times throughout the session that, throughout the year. Uh, where they'll be coming in and having those sessions with all of our students.
And families?
Families. There's family ones, just like they did last year. Um, yep. There's, there's a couple of other things that we have. I don't, I don't, I haven't connected with guidance yet. So I don't want to say it out loud, but there's a couple of other exciting things for families and students that are, might be coming up this year. I, I just want to wait till I confirm it. It would be bad if it's out of the bag.
And my last, because I've taken too much time, is in terms of course accreditation for colleges.
Mm-hmm.
Um, transferable happen? And what, you know, what's the, what does Simon's Rock have in terms of, let's say, if you want to do mass analysis?
It has to be, uh, it's, it has to meet the mass transfer, right? That was, the, the, part of this whole process, when you got Desi in, that it had to be, um, mass transfer. So.
Oh, great. Okay.
So it does transfer to a variety of schools and, uh, they're trying to have it be as widely accepted. And offer things that would be most likely to be accepted at.
Basic English course, you know, like those core requirement courses.
Beginning in.
Yes. Yeah, like those core requirement courses that you typically would take your freshman year.
Mm-hmm.
Would be the kinds of courses kids would be taking in high school and.
Check off that.
Check that off before they get to college. So colleges are more likely to accept those kinds of transfer credits. They're less likely to accept something that's very specific to your major.
Right, right.
So this is one, yeah.
You know, that's very often how the articulation movements.
Yeah, right.
Right, yeah. All right. Thank you. I will maybe not ask another question.
Oh, there's, I'm sure there's going to be lots more.
No, no, obviously, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Point of order, uh, just we moved that, that one agenda item for the executive session out. I was just going to keep her back.
Yeah, I'm hearing back from Josh that he will be in place at 7:30.
Okay.
So we can.
Do we need another motion to postpone or are we okay?
I think we're, we're good because we're going to go and we have to look at the student handbook.
Right. And as long as it's later, you're okay.
Did I say later? I thought I said.
No, 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 no. I'm saying if you change, I learned this, if you change a time to later than posted, you're okay. You can go early.
All right. So we're looking forward to some really interesting and exciting early college developments. And I'm sure if we visit the website, the early college website that's on our, um, our website. I think we can come in with new questions. So we need to cancel. Now we're going to new business A.
Yeah, yeah, one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Advanced placement, like we have English.
Yes.
Do we still have?
So, yeah, you get, so like you would take the course and you can take the AP exam so that you have the AP. Or you can say, I'm just going to take college credit. You can take whatever you want.
The only thing you have to do is take the test and it will qualify.
It'll qualify.
Okay. So you're not teaching two separate.
No, no, you're teaching advanced placement and you could opt to take the test, the AP test.
Or you could just take it for.
Right.
College.
High school.
Or high school.
Or blanket college.
It's not, it's not complicated.
And we're voting on it in the handbook. It's written.
Yeah. Why don't I know if that's specific in there?
No, there was a thing on, uh, advanced placement.
I see.
Yeah.
It's not going away is my point. You are still eligible to take the AP exam and get credit.
Right. But I guess, are we teaching two separate classes?
No, no.
No, we're teaching one.
You're teaching an English class and you qualify to take the AP.
AP exam, correct. No, no.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay. That's elegant. I like that. Uh, okay. So now, I'm sorry, I come up. I'm doing around here to see anymore. I didn't see your hand. All right. All right. So now, um, our annual approval of the parent student handbook.
I've moved to approve the 2022, 2023 student handbook revisions and the missions that were presented.
Becky's coming from.
Is that worded properly or did you just want me to?
I would second it, but I have something I'd like to amend to.
Okay, fine. Bonnie's seconding and would like to offer an amendment.
Yes, um, having gone through a big part of the handbook, I've discussed with you that there is nothing that speaks to early college high school. The program. I think it's important, there are several different places where it could just be inserted. In terms of whether it's the course sequence or a couple of lines in the introduction. But I think there are several places that I noted where, um, it's important that when the, you know, parents sign off. And the students sign off that they're aware of this, because there was no mention. And who, whoever worked on this, whatever, I cannot tell you how much that was. I mean, there's, it's, you know, it gives you the facts. I think it does a great job in protecting the district even more. And making parents aware of rules and regulations without being autocratic. But it makes it clear, you can refer to this now without pages of, I don't want to say double digits in the team. So thank you. I don't know whatever team.
It's been a couple of years.
It's been a couple of years, Mark, and I think we've finally evolved to.
Yeah, this is the tightest.
Yeah.
So, um, so the amendment could be shortened here or are you just saying?
My amendment is in the appropriate places that the team insert appropriate references to early college high school.
We're just going to.
Or whatever they, yeah.
You accept that amendment?
Um. That's what he's, it, it's a Stuart Moore, so.
Yeah. Uh, we're, you know, the point of streamlining the handbook was not to put in, you know, all of the early college, um. Information, right? So what we'll do is, um, and if Bonnie's can, you know, where she, where she thinks it might be, um. Applicable or where she'd like to see it in her opinion, you know, we'll just go, it's not material. It's not changing the substance of the handbook and the legal review that was done on it. But, um, we can make reference to the program of studies where it's, where it's outlined in detail for people. When we put that reference in, that's going to be the only.
Yeah, I think if it's like in the program of studies.
Correct.
Reference to.
Just not, yeah, you're not going to put.
I, I accept the amendment. It's in form, seconded in my moment. She's already implicitly accepted it.
Of course.
Uh, yes. Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
And Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane. All right. Um, I have, um, just heard from Josh. Uh, we had set up the, um, executive session on the, um. Motion, the, uh, strategy and, I mean, deference to her. The availability of both of these attorneys. I'm wondering if you want to. Or, um, taking that up now or they would be waiting until we take up the other executive sessions?
I'm not clear. Are you asking us to go, a, a motion to change our order?
Well, I'm, I'm just, um. Let me just, this looks very rude, but I'm texting back and forth with attorneys to find out what, what we're doing first. It seems like we should probably.
One's negotiation, one's strategic.
Right.
Which one are you wanting us to, which one is?
Well, the, the one that's listed at the end of the meeting is the one where both attorneys are available. We're, we're going to be there and we thought we would be at, ready for them at 7:30. We can say we're going to, and they hold till eight and we'll go and do the other one first. I think that's probably more in line with the way you laid things out.
The one you're coming back in.
One we're coming back in, the other one not. So I'm going to, um, just let Josh know, um.
Jane, if you want.
Definitely till eight, but there's not.
Okay. So we'll, maybe we'll, um.
I can send the addendum to everyone.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm going to let, um. Get Josh to let Carol know, um. That we're going to, it will be more like 7:45. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Oops. Okay, so, um. Okay. So I'll take a motion.
I move, so this is for the first executive session. I move motion, uh, to go, I moved to go into executive session for following purpose pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2. To conduct a strategy session in preparation for and to conduct contract negotiations with non-using personnel superintendent of schools entering convene in open session.
Carol?
Second one.
Absolutely.
Jim's seconded.
Okay. So, um. No, well, I, if we're going to ask or wait for this.
It'll be all right.
Yeah. So I don't know how you ask, tell somebody you have to wait for 15 minutes when they're calling a payment. Okay. Okay. Uh, because, does Danell have the link?
Everybody should have the link. She sent it separately. So do you want me to stop?
I think.
No, we need a vote.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Okay. So Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane. Okay. Welcome back.
It's been so long.
Yeah, yeah. Um, we have, um, an announcement to make about, um. Contract for, uh, Dr. Rigoberto for July 23. We, um, passed, uh.
22, 23.
Well. Well, don't call us at 5:23. Yeah. And if somebody from the committee would like to.
I move that we approve the addendum to the contract of the superintendent to cover the period from July 1/22 to June 30/23.
Second.
Well, we, we like to. And okay, so Art?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Danell?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane, yes. So this unanimous approval of the addendum to this contract.
Just to let you know, I'm gonna have to, Josh sent me about an hour ago.
Yeah.
The addendum, but he still left out a piece.
I'll find that as soon as I get. All right.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
I'm second. Art? Jeff?
Yes.
Jane? Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Laura? Yes. Dennis?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
And Jane. All right. Thank you very much, everybody.